Everyone, welcome to the September 16th work session for the Washington County Board of Education. Today, we have two items on the work session schedule. The first is a discussion of the master plan, which is our document every year that goes to MSD-E, laying out our roadmap for some of our goals, objectives, and approach to the year ahead. We'll spend approximately 15, 20 minutes on that topic, and then thereafter, we will move into a discussion of special education. So to lead us off, I'll hand it off to Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you very much. Oh, thank you, Dr. Hardy. What we're going to do today is really listen to the board and ask for the board's guidance. It can be as brief or as long as you would like. Jamie Hayde is the special projects administrator in the district. He's taken over the role that Mike Marco had for us in terms of the preparation of the master plan. It's not something that he was pleased to get, but something he's doing with a smile. So I'm going to turn this over to Jamie, let him kind of make the initial comments, and then we'll be guided by the board in terms of how long Jamie stays up here with you.
Well, good afternoon. I did smile every time. Every time I say the word "master plan," I smile. Talking about the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan, just a couple of things before we get into discussion. The goal of this master plan is to increase student achievement and eliminate achievement gaps. So basically, where you're going to see in your Friday packet, you received last year's master plan, and also, you received an outline from MSD-E of what they would like in the master plan. So you're seeing the aligning of the academics with the financing to support that. This year, you'll see the master plan, which was, I believe last year was over 200 pages, will be significantly less because we're removing most of the Race to the Top information because MSD is asking that. Also, this year, we're adding the UDL, Universal Design for Learning. So we're going to add a lot of information about that, which is required by COMAR. You'll see within the master plan that each individual department is setting goals, and they're backing that up with data that they have received throughout the year. So we can kind of work together with this on overall general suggestion. It is up to you, or we can go section by section. Section by section? It is completely up to you.
Overall?
Overall? Okay. So overall, general suggestions that you would like for us to look at when we are putting the master plan together?
Jamie, when you say that we're aligning budget and instruction, would we or could we or should we also be aligning policy with budget and instructions? So in other words, are there policies that we as a board drive the master plan or are driven by the master plan? And what would that look like? And how would that inform our work as a board? Also, I understand the state's going to be looking for, in the master plan, for some statement or program or whatever about what we're going to do to support the new discipline regs. Example would be behavioral specialist, and I'm just putting that out as one example, or whatever we would call them in our -- but I think Dr. Lowery said she's going to be looking for that, and I don't know if that's this year or next year, but I'm thinking it may be a little of both or each. And then also, the report on discipline is supposed to be included in the master plan in an audited report. So I didn't know what that was going to look like, and again, whether that's due this year or next year's edition. And then just one large question would be, I know that we got some waivers to extend some money from year four to year five, but at what point will we be asked as a board to sustain certain programs that are no longer funded? And how would we tackle that? When would that be brought forward? And is that part of our budget discussion? I'm not quite sure how that would all look.
We'll definitely take that back to the team that we're working together to create the master plan. I have all your suggestions. Thank you, Mrs. Brayman. Thank you.
Realizing that you're new.
I am very new at this.
To this, and very glad that you are the person who has responsibility. I think you're very capable. Can you tell us who is on the planning team? That would be helpful to me, to know who those individuals are.
Absolutely. Everyone, every department director or supervisor is on the team. They're putting their own individual department's information together. So math, social studies, ELA, all the curriculum, special education, Jeff is, Jeff Gladhill, which you'll be hearing soon, he's also a part of it, along with Dr. Wilcox and Dr. Michael. Yes.
I think if you look at the assurances.
Is it the same that's in there?
Right.
And so we'll replicate that list and update it.
In looking at the guidance, the Part I guidance that we were given, it talks a lot about systems, thinking about how they're going to redistribute funds, how they're going to readjust targets. And I was just wondering if you could give us some thoughts that may be out there as preliminaries, that the team has added around as possibilities?
In order to redistribute funds, leftover funds? Or I'm looking for an example here. Redistributing leftover funds, I think.
Well, will all the Race to the Top money be redistributed? Any new restricted funds? I guess we would be talking about the IDEA, the Title I funds, Title II funds?
I think right now, what you'd see is, let's deal with like the Race to the Top funds first. If we get to a point where we have unexpended funds, then we'll either ask for a waiver for additional time to spend it down to a zero balance, or at some point during the year, one of the things that you'll see when you look through the actual master plan itself, you see budget adjustments that are made so that we'll see that perhaps we may move more money into professional development from one line to another. We may move money from professional develop, not from professional, but from another line to say to support additional staffing or part-time staffing, things like that. You have evidence of that in last year's master plan. You may see some of that again when you see the documents that we submit for the 2014-2015 year. So that will take care of the Race to the Top money. I don't think you'll see us return any revenue to the state. There are some who might advocate for that, but I don't think that's a good practice. When you take a look at the plan itself, and they start to talk about the reallocation, what you may see, for example, is more money moved into early literacy. You may see staffing ratios change in some of our programs, because I think all of us are of kind of one mind that early intervention is best. I think you may see some resources moved into some of the areas where we support young people prior to their entry into special education for longer periods of time. Just today, we were talking about what we're doing for 504 planning, for example. You may see money reallocated to lineups to support students who have 504 needs, because we may become a little more open as to what we think is a 504 accommodation that should be made for a child. So I think those are some examples of things that you'll see going forward.
Mrs. Williams, I can also tell you the Race to the Top fund is completely, they have spent out that entire, the entire allotted, Title I and Title II both have spent out their money, and you'll see all of that in the final product.
Thank you.
Actually, that was exactly what I was going to ask you, because I thought you had said that that has been, that will not even, Race to the Top won't even be an issue, because we have spent the money for that.
Yes, we have spent all of our money, so we actually, from MSD-E, we are allowed to remove all that from the master plan.
Okay. I thought that's what I read, but I didn't want to, whoops, I didn't want to make a mistake there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
There is some mention made of local commitment, questioning whether or not three consecutive years of maintenance of effort has impacted the master plan in any way. Has there been an impact because we've been held to maintenance of effort?
I'm going to refer this to Dr. Wilcox.
You know, Mr. Bailey, one of the things that, most of the things during my tenure that have been no longer funded by maintenance of effort, for example, the crossing guards, health services, things like that, there isn't a direct impact to those. But there probably is an indirect impact, because money that we have to spend in the general fund, we can't spend for other things. For example, now spending a little over $3 million a year for health services, those are resources that we can't now spend for lowering pupil teacher ratios at early grade levels. They are perhaps resources that we can't use to fulfill some of our desires around enhancing technology in the system. So I think there is, but it's not a direct or a one-to-one relationship that we've drawn yet. But it's an observation that I think probably determines that we have some more conversation around.
Kind of what I suspected to hear, yeah.
I think, you know, if you look at the maintenance of effort, the, really, I think there have been, and I may have to ask Dr. Michael to help me, there have really been three major changes. There has been the crossing guards, the reduction of the purchase of some buses, and then there has been the health plan. Those are the three big dynamics that we no longer have.
I absolutely agree that our number one priority should probably be early childhood literacy, but at the same time, I think we're taxed with doing some more for the gifted and talented. Has there been any discussions about anything new or different on the horizon that we might do for gifted and talented? Any new programs or?
We haven't talked about any new programs in terms of GNT or gifted and talented education, but one of the things Jamie has done through Title II is he's begun to support some additional professional development. All of our GNT teachers will be attending a conference in Baltimore coming up shortly, which is something they've not had the opportunity to do as an entire group. Now, proximity helps with that, having it in Baltimore, but I think this is the first time that really nearly every teacher in the district will be going to this conference.
We've also set up for when they return that they'll have additional days where they can meet and plan out.
Good.
I look forward to seeing the integration of, I think, what's coming out in the technology plan into the master plan. Concept of not a one-to-one system, but a right device for the right student in the right learning environment. I think that's a, I think that's a great way to approach it, because, you know, we have a one-to-one program, that's sort of a nice slogan to put on the side of the wall or on the side of a building, but is that really impacting kids? I think the approach that it sounds like staff is recommending that we take, and we haven't had the report yet, would, you know, would look forward to hearing it, but I think that could be a much better model for letting, letting the instruction drive the technology that you use rather than in reverse, which I think is a mistake a lot of people make is, you know, you walk into school and see a bunch of kids like this, and you think, wow, they're really learning. And in some cases, they are, and in some cases, they may not be. As I've heard Dr. Wilcox say many times, you don't need one of these to learn your times tables that you could get for $2.50 worth of flashcards. Although this may be more fun, I'm not sure it's more effective. So that's what I look forward to seeing as you develop this next generation. Do you know if MSD is now requiring, and I asked Dr. Wilcox, because we both serve on the Advisory Council for Virtual Schools, and the council last year made a recommendation regarding adding components to the master plan about blended learning or technology. Do you know if that's a requirement now in the state, or is that a year to sew out?
I think it's a year out.
Okay.
Going back to the planning team, what I have here is the 2013, so I'm assuming that Mr. Corns will be a part of this planning team. I know that there's been some change in staffing, and that, so we'll have an updated membership team.
Yes, it will be updated. That's why I said it would be adjusted.
My other question then would be, in reading through the guidelines, it talks about education that is multicultural and having to identify our strength areas and what our improvement goals. And I know that Dr. Wilcox and I have had some conversation about cultural literacy and, not literacy, I'm sorry, cultural competency, as it's been called, and some things that are happening in some other counties around the state. So that's certainly an area that I'm interested in, and I think that there's some work that we need to do as a county in that area.
You'll see that reflected in the plan, but you'll also be happy to note that we have or are very closely entered into a contract to provide some training yet this year in cultural competency with all of our administrative team members, and then have it Berkeley Dona schools. We've identified the vendors. In addition to that, I am talking with a group about doing some climate surveys of the district, surveys of our teachers, our employees, and the larger community to kind of help us have a ground zero point to begin this work.
That's great. Thank you.
Following up on that, is there, will there be something in the master plan about, in the HR section? Is such a thing in a master plan on minority recruitment, hiring, retention? Since that's been a focus, and I hope will continue to be a focus, I think it's important that that at least in some way be reflected in this document. Are there comments or discussion? Jamie? Okay. If not, we will, I guess, change out the seats then, huh?
All right.
And bring the special ed.
Mr. Gladhill, will you bring your team, or those, if it's just you, it's just you, whichever you choose? Jeff, if you would begin by introducing your team to everyone in the room, I'm not sure the board members all know each, and why don't we give the board members an opportunity? I know, Mr. Brayman, you probably want to come around this way so you can look, and all right, there you go. I saw her starting to twist a little bit, so. You're fine, Mr. Right, now, they know you. No.
Good afternoon. Mary Gray.
Hi, I'm Margaret Gray. I'm one of the supervisors of special ed for case management.
Hi, Hartman. I'm a supervisor in special ed for Mr. President.
And Ms. Norris is still at Mercer Street School managing students today, so Mr. there will be answering any questions pertaining to Mercer Street School Job Development Program as well.
All right.
Okay. So it's our pleasure to come before you today to give a special education update and receive any feedback, directions you would like for us to go in the future. So starting off, I think everyone received this information on the board packets on Friday, and there'll be materials that we'll reference as we go through it. When we look at our students with disabilities over the last five years, actually, six years, from 2009 to 2014, we've seen a decrease of about 2.1% of students with disabilities being served throughout the county, ages three through 21. Something to note with that is some of this decrease pertains to our focus on early intervening services, as Dr. Wilcox referenced, and our efforts to help include general education students who might need extra support, along with special education students in the classroom, to prevent them from being qualified as a student with disability. Feel free to ask questions as we go through the presentation. You might want to wait till after each slide, or even if something pops in, please go ahead and ask.
I had a question about that. You said something about identifying them. So what happens to those, since we had such a big drop over those years, what has happened to those students that normally would have been identified as needing assistance?
Well, we normally have less students identified to begin with, because when they're placed in interventions, they're receiving SCIRD instruction through a SCIRD provider targeting their SCIRD deficit areas, they're showing progress in that area, and then they do not need to be referred for special education, because the need really didn't progress to the point that it's a disability impacting their education.
But then, don't we have more students coming in?
We do.
I was just curious at how much of a drop there was there, because I thought even if they did pick up and do more as they were going along through high school, we're getting some others in. Is that because everything's being moved up through elementary and so on, so everybody is doing better as they get through all the grades and so on?
Well, and we're also hoping it's as a result of our focus on early intervening services through our Birth Through Five program, which we've seen an increase in refers with, or increase in services from. And we'll get to that in a few slides.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Sure. As we break out our current population of students with disabilities, ages three through 21, you'll see about 30% have a specific learning disability. The next largest categories are other health impairment and speech language, which is about 20% per category. And then following that, we have autism, intellectual disability, and emotional disability, which is about 10% each, and then the other category, which comprises, which is comprised of the other seven disabilities that we qualify children under. Yes, Ms. Hurst?
Sorry, I have just another question. This is based on this year? Is that what?
When we look at, we utilize data from October 2013, which is our child count, which gives us our funding formula for 2014. We're going to be going through that actually the end of this month, because the state moved up our child count date the end of October to the end of September, so it more accurately portrays our student count enrollment, which happens the end of September as well.
So is this sort of the normal amount of students in each of these categories?
When you look across the state, it's proportional to what's going on across Maryland, yes.
Well, I know autism has been a big push, and I thought maybe, are we doing more to identify that than in the past? Has that upped the number of autistic identified students?
Our assessments, and Ms. Gray could chime in if she needs to, but our assessments have become more complex regarding autism, because we're seeing higher needs and more intense needs that is requiring more services to get in front of and to show educational benefit from. However, we're not really coding more students as autism. I think looking at last year, we increased maybe 15 kids, but we're seeing a lot of kids coming in maybe with another primary disability, maybe a specific learning disability, that have autism, but they're not coded as autism, even though they're being impacted by that medical current.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. We talked about early intervening services. An individualized family service plan is similar to an IEP. However, it's given to children birth through the age of three, and parents have the option to continue their services through the age of five if the students are eligible for an IEP. That being said, if you look at the trend from 2008 to 2014, we've increased each year, although we only increased one by last year, but we think that's an effort to go out to actually purposefully provide more parental training. We have motor groups that we give out within the community, taught times, a lot of methods that we have developed to meet student needs in groups that are community-based. Otherwise, the majority of our services are provided in the student's home, or in a daycare setting.
Gladhill?
Yes.
Kindergarten, I think, does pre-screening for readiness for kindergarten?
The MMSR, which is changing, yes.
Do you, through that information, identify youngsters that may have a problem with learning?
Our school teams look at their students when they're looking at data, and when the teams do suspect a disability, then they're then referred to special education services. I don't know, Ms. Robbins, is there something you'd like to elaborate on with that?
The Maryland Model of School Readiness is a tool that looks at students' pre-readiness, their learning capabilities. We do track children that aren't.
So, Mr. Gladhill, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but if, because we're webcasting this right now. So, Mr. Gladhill, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but if, because we're webcasting this right now, and we're also going to rebroadcast it, if you speak, would you come up so we can catch your comments from this point? Well, they can just come up to the table, I think. It'd be fine.
If you look at special education funding for fiscal year 14, the county funds provide $20.5 million, which is by the vast majority of our support services we provide for students. Followed by that, we have federal funds at roughly $5.2 million, and then another million dollars we get through medical assistance, and about $200,000 through state funds directly.
Mr. Gladhill, the state fund there, that's lower than I would have guessed if I'd just closed my eyes and asked. Is that, is that the match on the private placements? Is that primarily where that money comes from?
That is actually.
I know our rev, from serving on the finance committee, I know our special ed revenue varies based on number of students who are in private placements, and that's state money. Is that all captured in that $213,000, or is that someplace else in another budget?
That's not captured in this because it's something we're getting on the back half. It's not what we're getting on the front. The $213,000 are some grants we're getting through infant and toddler, the birth-to-five program. What sometimes is confusing is the 5.2 federal fund that we get, that comes through the state as what we refer to as pass-through, which is the local application of federal funds we present each year.
Thank you.
Sure. Was there another question?
That's, I was going to ask you about that. Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Mr. Gladhill, could we go back to the previous, about the previous slide, I think about the infant and toddler? Just help me understand what it would look like. We're hearing that a large number of newborns at Meritas Hospital are staying for an additional two weeks because they're coming into the world with addiction problems. And of course, under HIPAA, there's certain confidentiality about what information can move from a patient, a child, a family to us as a school system. How does that referral look like? I mean, does the doctor suggest to the parent that you do X, Y, Z? How do we capture those needy children very early on in the process?
The majority of referrers, and Miriam, you can chime in, come through parents directly or healthcare providers as well. But it's very timely what you're bringing up, because this is a demographic I've seen in some committees that I represent the public school system on, and we've been talking about somehow trying to get a universal release of information signed when they are released, so we can have more referrers or provide other supports through us, or the Department of Social Services, or a community-based agency to allow extra support to the families, so we can get in front of any potential needs of kids.
In my concern, we may need legislation to do that, and I'm not sure what that looks like.
We actually have legislation through the infant and toddler program, so any infant that is born at Meritas Hospital that is considered drug-affected, not drug-exposed, but drug-affected, Meritas must refer to the infant and toddler program. So we are getting those referrals. They are, that referral is also simultaneously going to the Department of Social Services. So we are looking to work with the child and the family around developmental delays and needs, and then DSS is working with the family to support the other needs. So it's a good partnership that happens with Meritas and the two public agencies.
Is that fairly new?
The past three years, I guess, we've been mandated to, they've been mandated to work with us on the referral process, and they are very consistent with the referrals. We have the numbers available for the number that we get. The referrals come in, access to the families is not always as easy to have once we get there.
So prior to the three years, we're going to have a gap in there of children coming into the system, four and five-year-olds, that we may not have this background?
If they have been drug-affected, we may not have that initial referral, but usually by ages two, two and a half, they're definitely just demonstrating significant developmental delays. So then we're getting the referral from the physician, the family, the grandmother, somebody else is referring.
Assuming they get in the system with the medical personnel, we should hear about it before they come in our door or be aware of it.
We are hoping that we're getting them. And our referrals are pretty consistent with the expectation of the state. So we're meeting that indicator, so we're probably getting most of them.
Moving on to the students we have in non-public placements. Back in 2007, we started with 217, and that dropped about 60% in 2012 to 77 because of a focus we had on making sure we're providing high-quality instruction in a setting where they're showing the most academic growth and progress at. The figures for 2014, our current students, we would anticipate that's going to increase because that's just of, as of last week, that we have 63 students. Specialized programs, we have approximately 53 students at Mercer Street School who require a small specialized structured classroom to show educational progress. All the students at Mercer Street School are working towards a certificate of program achievement. You may recall that change from certificate of program completion to certificate of program achievement. So that's what we'll be referring to that status as. Job Development Program has 28 students enrolled. A lot of these students access community-based work experiences and travel out and have authentic work experiences that they may either get paid for or do internships at. Kind of co-morbid with the Job Development Program, that's not just tied to that, a job coach program. We don't really place students there, but it's services available for special education students, and they serve a predominant number of students working towards a diploma. And I believe we served 90-some students last year in that program across 80 different employers. And we have three staff that helps to teach students with disabilities job skills to move forth with that.
Dr. Gladhill, I think there are actually students here today working in this building.
Yes.
So many of you may have seen some students that were here in the building, and they're here with their job coaches, working.
Life skills programs, we have 18 specialized life skills programs across the county in elementary, middle, and high schools, nine autism programs. This is a separate handout in your packet. If you look at special education programs, there was a second one that was just specific to early intervention birth-to-five programs. Summit programs, we have five elementary summit programs, three middle, and three high school. And our birth-to-five programs is what we talked about earlier. We define some community groups, not only to provide access only for the students, but to provide access for parents as well. So we can provide parent or training. I know in some of our programs, parents actually ride the bus sometimes to help them get acclimated to riding a bus before they come to us in kindergarten. They do some phenomenal things within those programs. So I don't know if you had any questions regarding that.
I had a question about summit because I'm vaguely familiar with the program, but I was wondering exactly which students are identified for that particular program.
And to be honest, I think I'm going to have Ms. Hartman come up. She has a microphone there?
But would you come up here, just because the cameras are set for this table. I'm sorry. I probably should have told Mr. Right now, that was my reason for asking you to come up, because he was gracious enough with a mic back there, but.
The summit programs are designed to work with students with various disabilities. The most common disability served is the emotional disability, but we also have students with other health impairment, some students autism that are diploma-bound, but they're on the spectrum, and some even learning disabled students. The primary thread through that, though, is the behavioral challenges that have, despite programming that is available in the comprehensive school, they require more intensive services. What sets the summits apart a little bit is the fact that there is a full-time social worker assigned to each of the programs, so it has a very therapeutic focus, regardless of the disability that the student has or kind of the presenting need, but they're available for individual counseling, group counseling, immediate crisis intervention. If a school team believes that a student is in need of a summit program, which I believe was your original question, there's a district IEP process where they submit a packet of information. It's reviewed. We have an IEP team meeting that includes a lot of people, representatives from the program that's being considered, and we talk about the student's needs. And if the least restrictive environment needs to be that level of service, then we work collaboratively to make that happen.
So the main difference is the emotional element?
Yes, and the summit classrooms are designed so that they can be 100% self-contained if that's what a student needs for a period of time, or just maybe on a very off day. Or they can support students who are fully included 100% of their day in the comprehensive schools. They're staffed with a teacher, two paraprofessionals, and a full-time social worker, so there are a lot of things to kids to meet their needs.
I'm sorry, I missed. How many schools have that program?
The elementary programs are located at Rockland Woods and Salem Avenue. The middle school programs are located at Northern Middle, and there's a program at Antietam Academy. The high school programs are at North Hagerstown High School, Williamsport, and again at Antietam Academy.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to go back to something Mr. Gladhill said. You said that our non-public placements are down because of the focus on high-quality instruction and having the right setting for individual students.
Pretty much the summit programs allowed for that to occur, yes.
So my question was going to be, of these specialized programs, which ones have we seen an increase in the number of summit, life skills, autism? Are there any that say over the past three years that we've seen these significantly increase in the number of classes?
To be honest, we've seen a significant increase in life skills, autism, and summit programs.
For those three?
Yeah, to the, I mean, it's to the point that they're almost even at capacity at this point.
So it's truly about creating more of the environments that these students need in order to keep them out of private placement? Is that?
Yes, and dependent upon the kids who are coming in in the future and our ability to transition the kids currently in the program back into their general education class with support, which is why the summit program is good, because kids could be getting all of their classes in a general education classroom and still access the therapeutic support when necessary.
So they truly have that flexibility of either being contained or being totally mainstreamed, or some?
That is correct. There are some students who require that complete self-containment for a period of time, and our goal is then to bring them out slowly, and so they, success builds success. And then there are some that, they come in the beginning of the day, they check in, they access the therapeutic supports when they need them, and then they are in math and in ELA and everywhere else that all the other students are. So yes, they've been very successful in that regard.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. I know as we started inclusion years and years and years ago, along with that originally, and I don't know if the program is still in place, we used to do a lot of sensitivity training of other students to help them understand the challenges that a special-needs student, one of their colleagues, one of their peers, might be dealing with. Are we still offering that type of in-classroom training for our staff as well as the students?
I think, I'm sorry. I think that the social workers have been very key to that in working with the administration and faculty of each school that is the host school for the programs. They go to SST teams, they go to, they're assigned different homerooms, different things like that, so they're very much included in that, and they do work with the other students in that regard as well.
And the family support resource center always assists with that as well.
So there is an opportunity, just to get a sense of how this looks on the front line, so there's an opportunity for a teacher to spend a day or a half a day or whatever with her, his classroom, and explain some of the different challenges that some of their peers may have, to be able to discuss it, maybe try to be more empathetic and try to walk in the other person's shoes. We do have that, is it optional? Is it mandatory? Is it just a protocol that we always use?
We normally try to work with the school principal and the school staff to determine what's the most appropriate in each situation, because sometimes normally what happens is parents will release information to allow us to come in and talk about specific needs sometimes as well. And when that's done, it might be a class training from the family support resource center, maybe from a social worker, maybe from another qualified staff. It might be something, we might ask to have a substitute for the teacher to go visit a program or something to see how they're setting up this classroom to provide the structure so the teacher can go back into that class and carry over some best practices with them.
I don't know. May I continue?
Sure.
I had just attended a special ed citizen advisory committee meeting just before this meeting, and couple issues came up, which I think this is a great format to discuss them. One is a concern that seems to be a perennial concern about boundaries in the school, on the playground. Some of our schools evidently don't have fencing where they have a special ed program at the school, and so there's a high risk for certain children. Some of the manifestation of their particular issue might be elopement, maybe, I'm out of here, okay? And without the fence, there is a concern that the adult might not be able to catch up with the child, whatever this scenario might be. What kind of protocol? Is this more of a facility question? But to me, it's a safety and security issue. How would you?
How we've worked through that in the past is when there's a concern regarding a student, we talk about the needs of the student when the behavior is displayed, how we can best prevent that behavior. It might be that a student might need to be in a more structured program. It might be that maybe we need to have extra support with a student at recess that is capable of making sure the student doesn't run off into the street if that happens. Maybe it's a modified schedule of that student in the score. Those are types of responses we can have, but it's really individualized based on the student need. We have put fences up at schools in the past, I know, because it was required for a student, and it was kind of a pattern we've seen as well in that area.
And I would just, you're speaking individually, and I appreciate that, but, and this may be a false assumption, if you have a class of eight or 10 students with some special needs, and they're all out in a recess situation, how can you predict what one child might do on Monday and another child might do on Tuesday, and should we be more proactive in trying to keep something from happening instead of reacting to?
And that's a good point, and I would say we have the same issues with a lot of general education students, especially coming into kindergarten. And that might be a topic we want to kind of go back, consult with facilities on, and get back with you if you would like in a future session.
This seemed to be. Another issue, which seems like an easy fix, but I'm sure somebody's going to tell me it isn't, filters on the fluorescent lights in classrooms that have a lot of special ed, or I would say, I have a problem with fluorescents. The filters help with the sensory overload of some of these children, and I know some schools have done it and some schools haven't. So I was curious if there's some sort of way of consistency on adding filters to help with that, and whether that's come to your attention.
Yeah, actually, recently it has, and we make those determinations again based on the student, and if it's something that would be beneficial, we also have to be cautious if it's in a general education setting, the impact it might have on other students as well. So it's kind of a delicate line we work with the school on and come to conclusion that way.
I think the filters would help all of us. That's just me. I happen to not like fluorescent lights. I think they're obnoxious, but again, that's a personal bias. But that, to me, seems like an easy fix, but again, maybe that's a facility question that could be brought up there. And finally, I thought this was, and maybe Dr. Wilcox, it's something you can speak to as well. There are only two graduation tracks in our system. I think the state only allows your diploma and your certification or certificate. Does that actually handle all the various needs that children have? I would think there's probably some children that are probably somewhere in the middle between those two, and evidently some adjoining states have gone to a third track, and I didn't know if Maryland or superintendents, or if you're aware of that conversation.
Yes, that's actually a topic that my fellow directors of special education have brought up with the state. And if you recall, about two or three years ago, when they talked about graduation requirements, I think in the very beginning, our proposal was about a tier diploma, but they stayed away from that. away from that. And in Maryland, our criteria to be working towards a certificate of program of achievement has become very stricter, especially four or five years ago, based on a process MSD has implemented in to be compliance with federal guidance and regulations. Due to that, and with PERC coming in, we are seeing increased concerns about students who may have a low intellectual functioning score, like an IQ score, intelligence quotient, but have no adaptive concerns, meaning you would never know a disability exists if there's a student or somebody with us, but intellectually, the student may not have the capability to be at average or even at low average. And those are the students that are not eligible anymore for the certificate of program achievement or the alternative MSA. And that's, we're continuing to kind of look at that, and we're sharing information with the state as we receive it. I have received some of the similar concerns, and the parents I've spoken with understand the process, and I've kind of referred them in the proper direction so we can get their voices concerned. There's a state CCAC meeting as well as the local CCAC meeting, and that's something that can be brought up as though, not only from us, but as parents as well.
Because, I mean, if a student has no possible opportunity due to either cognitive or behavioral issues, to sit in a calculus class or Algebra I class, that is a requirement of graduation and diploma. But yet they're higher performing, too high performing to be in a certificate program, that child isn't served well by either. So it seems like that the middle one, which would give more, I don't know, life skills, more opportunity for vocational training, I just, I'm afraid we're going to leave children with only those two options. We're not giving them that personalized opportunity that I think we take a lot of effort to do with all of our students.
And in practice, what we do a lot of times, especially in high school, for students that might experience frustration because they're in that situation, we can still work with them, like we talked about with our job coaches, that's a population they help with sometimes, because even to exit with a certificate of program achievement, the students have to have the skills to be able to go out and obtain employment, or at least in a supported environment be able to do that. So versus placing students in like four academic core content classes, they may get some employability skills training, they may take a class of life skills back in a life skills program potentially, but they have to have access to diploma-based classes in Maryland College Core Ready standards. So that's an individualized decision that can be spread across seven years. And you might see some of the impact with that with the four-year graduation cohort we're going to get to in a minute.
Are you finding these diploma-based students who can't achieve getting frustrated? Do you see behavior issues becoming something that we're dealing with?
We believe that that's part of the reason we're seeing some of the capacity reaching within our life skills programs and autism programs.
And I would just share with Mrs. Harshman, I think the state rating right now, ratio of students autism, went out of 60 students have some line of autism on the spectrum significant. I don't know what it is locally, but that's the state.
And I think that's medically and not educationally, correct.
Correct.
Gladhill, or is it Dr. Gladhill?
It is Dr. But I respond either.
I caught that. Just some information. Suppose you were having an IEP meeting for someone going into a summit program. How many professional people would be sitting in on that meeting?
Honestly, it would depend upon the number of agencies maybe involved. Sometimes we get foster care students that might have foster mom, biological mom involved. There might be a court-appointed advocate that might need to attend, maybe more specifically, I defer to Ms. Hurtman.
A typical district IEP meeting will have about eight to 10 school employees.
Eight to 10 employees?
Yes.
School employee.
If that's, yes, and if a parent is invited to bring anyone that they choose to bring as well.
Would it?
Because usually you have two programs represented. You have the receiving school, the school that is being under consideration is, needs to be at that table as well to have input. So you have a merging of kind of two teams. We do, one thing that we shifted away from about five years ago, all central IEPs used to be at Marshall Street, so everybody had to kind of come up and leave their buildings and things like that. My district program team, we go to the homeschool, so we're trying to minimize the time people are out. We try to keep them very time-focused, but we need a lot of input. These are big decisions when you're talking about moving students out of their homeschool. So we have all the people that we need there so that we can get in, have an IEP make those decisions, and get the student the level of service that they need.
Would it be typical or atypical for those meetings to run two days?
Very atypical. They usually run less than an hour. The actual IEP meeting, yes.
Any other ones ever run two days?
For two, that would be very rare.
Sometimes, I mean, every meeting might have the potential to go to two days if it's kind of information being presented that takes more than two or three hours, because if a meeting's lasting that long, it would be better to continue it and come back the next day, because usually at that point in time, members digress and we're not really focusing on the needs of students. It's very atypical that any meeting would go that far, but we do have some that might.
That's a constituent question, by the way.
Okay. Onto some performance data. If you look at, this is reading data from the Measures of Academic Progress. We have compared students without disabilities to students with disabilities, separated by primary, we're looking at here now. And as you can see, we still have a lot of work to do with students specifically below the norm, not making typical growth. Moving on, you can see the elementary data, and then the middle school data. This is a true comparison of the data because it's truly students without disabilities compared to students with disabilities. A lot of times we see graphs that say all students. So you're seeing the true difference in the two groups in this data. I'm trying to be cognizant of the time as well.
I was just going to say, Dr. Gladhill, I was just talking with Dr. Wilcox about how many things are on the closed session agenda, and we don't have a heavy closed session agenda, so I don't want you to rush. With the consent of the board, we'll stay here as long as there's information being presented and there's discussion taking place. I don't think we're in any danger of not being able to get our work done, so please take the time you need.
All right, thank you.
But don't go crazy.
Okay. So moving on then to math data, we see a relative trend with the same numbers in each category. These are the groups of kids, especially the kids below norm without making typical growth, that scores target through their individualized school teams, classroom-focused improvement process teams, and intervention-focused improvement process teams. We talked about the four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate.
Can you go back one more? What's interesting to me about these slides is how big the yellow section is.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's the growth of.
Well, and let me clarify, the norms are set based on what Northwest Educational Assessment has set based on nationally norms across. A year's growth isn't typical growth. Typical growth may be less than that year's growth. So that's a very good question.
So, let me ask the question a different way then. So the yellow for the students without disabilities and the yellow for the students with disabilities?
No, that's the same. Yes.
And that goes to the point that I was going to make, for the students with disabilities, the yellow.
Mm-hmm.
Those are students who are below the norm, which is not what we want. But the large number of students who are making the amount of growth that they want in a year's, I must say something very good about.
Yes, I would say that that shows that the special education program is being effective, and especially if that would be disaggregated further, that may show differences.
So that even if they're not yet getting to a level of where we are helping them get, make progress, and they're making great progress even compared to students without disabilities.
Yes, you could say, you could say we're starting to close the gap, especially with that pocket based on the data. Good observation.
The students without disabilities, I assume SWO is students without?
Yes.
The primary grades there on that first column, and then you jump over to the elementary, increases slightly, and then from elementary to middle, it remains about the same. Those children staying, not making progress at all, I mean, there's very little.
Based on this chart, it just means that the students aren't making the typical growth that the average student would.
Yeah, that real bright red, that's below the normal growth, without typical growth. That surprises me.
Yeah, and as you can see, it's an area we're focusing on, not only in special education, but general education as well. The four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate, as we talked about earlier, students who are working towards a certificate of program achievement, or even students who are diploma-bound, that are on a five-year, six-year, or seven-year plan are not included in this. But this is kind of the outcome data that we are really working to improve. And in the last three years, you can see we have increased it a little, but that's a gap that we are really focusing on closing. HSA test performance for the class of 2013, the majority of our students are passing the HSAs in algebra, biology, and English. And moving on to the next slide, when you look at the different paths to meet graduation HSA requirements, that continues to be the majority of students with disabilities, although we are lagging behind their non-disabled counterparts. And we also include in that slide the combined school option and the kids graduating with a bridge option. Current initiatives, and these initiatives are aligned with our focus on early intervening services. We're looking to optimize the quality and fidelity of our instructional interventions based on student need. Part of that is through universal design for learning to ensure that teachers are incorporating the best instructional practices and are aware of them and all the resources. Because with technology, sometimes resources get created and disseminated before they get down to the classrooms. We're trying to bridge that and optimize the communication with our teachers throughout the system. Utilize multiple data points and making informed decisions and creating pathways to allow that to occur, like through our instructional intervention-focused improvement process. Those are teams that schools have formed to really look at students with disabilities or other needy students and aligning them in the appropriate interventions by school and tracking their data in a way where when we have schools with high mobility, like for example between Renner and Bestor, they can still have access to that data when the student comes in. They're not waiting for a week or two to get data. They can look at the background, previous assessment scores, and move on. Increased birth-to-five parent training and partnering with parents, that's something that I think is very evident in our increased number of services we're providing for kids in the infant and toddler program and our community-based activities. We have instituted a parent satisfaction survey as of January of last year to ensure that parents feel that they have been part of the IEP team decision-making progress process, and they can also put forth any comments or recommendations as part of that survey as well. This is new this year, and it's a requirement through the state, actually through legislation, that we have to distribute the Parents Guide to Ability of Services at every annual IEP meeting when students transition from an individualized family service plan to an individualized educational program. And we have to do it every time a parent either receives a related service or requests one that may not be needed. So that's actually a hard copy we have to provide to them at each of those meetings. We're implementing, we're going to implement digital psychological assessments. This is being done to help match where we're going at with assessments digitally, and it will also help to work with kids rather than the assessment stage and with the cost-effectiveness of buying test manual kits for every school psychologist. It'll save time with manipulating the data and accessing it if we need it for educational We are working to increase our medical assistance revenue while at the same time minimize any staff time away from instruction, minimizing paperwork in the classroom, so our teachers and staff can be focused on instruction, looking at interventions, and helping to close that achievement gap. Our school psychologists have met over the summer to update the threat assessment process to make sure it was tweaked to align with all federal guidelines and the latest out there. It's actually the Virginia model through Dewey Cornell, they helped to tweak some things with, and that's something we're rolling out this year as well. We've created a hybrid job development program, Mercer Street School class, where students who attend Mercer Street School are not able to go out for life skills or employability skills training on the job, can get it within Mercer Street School. And we have five different programs that they can transition to to get exposed to several different areas. We are working on increasing community participation in the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, because we do want to have a lot more parents come participate and not focus on a specific disability category, but more or less the direction of where we're going, similar to what you talked about with the diploma status. Because I think the more we can be together and show consolidated fun and be together, we might be able to make more of a change. We are piloting the National Center and State Collaborative Assessment. That is replacing the Alternative Maryland Score Assessment, and we were literally informed last week that this is something that we are now participating in. Maryland just found out from the consortium or collaborative that they are participating in it statewide. It was only going to be a few counties, but now it is the entire state. We have to identify two students per grade level to participate, which is an opportunity for teachers to see what this assessment is like, because it will be replacing the Alternative Maryland Score Assessment next school year. And to be honest with you, there's a lot of information we don't have about this, and there's a lot of information that we could go on for hours about regarding this now. We are going to continue to monitor the ongoing discussion and recommendations of the Commission on Special Education Access and Equity Report, which we provided you a copy along with kind of a brief synopsis of what the recommendations were. At this time, we're willing to engage any discussion or questions you may have.
Speaking of trends or initiatives or whatever, but I'm hearing rumblings that there's discussion that free and reduced meal status may prove cause for an IEP status. And I look at our county and I'm thinking we have, if you just take elementary, we're close to 50% free and reduced meal. If you put secondary into that, it drops it a couple points, maybe 48. Are you hearing that that would be a possible cause, would prove cause for an IEP?
I have not heard that at all. And actually, in IDEA, there's a provision in it that says environmental conditions and such, like as poverty, isn't justification to refer for an IEP. It's about the educational impact not showing progress. Usually if we get kids in, I mean, our kids, especially if they're at a high-risk category, we pay special attention to them in school, making sure that their parent instruction is paired with where their needs are at. And if over a period of time they're not responding to interventions, that refer may come to fruition, but not just because of any singular status.
I think they're discussing early childhood with poverty and some issues at the federal level, and there was some talk about that, so I was just wondering. And then the other question I had was the conversation of caseload versus workload and how you would see that. I see caseload as something is what we're probably doing. I see caseload as something is what we're probably doing now, and they're wanting to shift it to a limit or restriction of a certain amount of workload. Or how do you see that playing out if that comes down?
Well, I was actually in the committee, or at the commission, when they were discussing that. And I think they want somebody to look into it, because it's something that's very hard to define, especially across scorcologists versus pupil personnel workers versus special education teachers. Because one of the things we even look at within our programs, it's not number of students, it's the acuity of the students you have and the time it might take for staff to support the students. It's really kind of a tricky, there couldn't be a formula really to match it, in my opinion. But I think they want to look into it. I don't know if they're looking at minimizing standards or not. Because actually, in that part of the discussion, they were just pretty much talking about wanting to have more research into it. I'd be surprised if that did come to fruition, but if it does.
Share.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Okay, if not, oh, thank you, Dr. Wilcox for the report. Thank you, Dr. Glad Hill. Thank you, team, for the report. We appreciate it very much, and we will adjourn and reconvene in 15 minutes for our closed session. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.